Get started, let's call the Johnston City Council Work Session number 22-24 to work. Cindy, you'll call please.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Earlier this past week, I guess, my weeks are all running together here right now. The Finance Committee, along with the Department Directors, met with Matt Stufel from PFM, and asked that he and Carrie from that office as well do a little bit of a deeper dive into the financing analysis regarding CIP. And then we were able to talk through some projects and talk about maybe some options for using some cash on hand, or possibly delaying some projects, or lengthening some projects. And Matt is on the line with us tonight to go through that model with you, the rest of the council. He wasn't feeling well either and didn't want to necessarily spread his germs to all of us. Here, can share your screen if you can. Pull up your models and start explaining to them again what we were talking about last week.
Sure. Can anybody hear me okay?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. So, and you can see my screen now. I'm sure it's little. Is my screen showing Theresa?
Yes.
Okay. So every year, about this time of year when we get the CIP from the city, we put together a plan of finance on all of the different components that are in the CIP. And so this piece that we're talking about tonight is really just, the pieces related to TIF, as well as the debt service levy portion that is funded, and then anything else that is funded through the general obligation bonds. And so, we go out five years on this, and so there's two models that were attached to the Board Ducks tonight. This first one is what we call the general obligation debt capacity. And what this does is it looks at your legal authority to issue general obligation bonds to be paid back or secured by property taxes. So, in this, the first column, was there a question? Nope, okay. On the far left-hand side is the fiscal year that we're looking at. So, the fiscal year that we're kind of starting to look at now is the fiscal year 2024. These valuations were the preliminary valuations that we looked at earlier this fall for the city, so about 2.72% growth over last year. And then, so this is what establishes the legal debt limit. So, the legal debt limit of the city is 160 million. And then, the self-imposed, which is the 75%, is that 120 million. So, current geo-debt of the city is, at the beginning, and this will be as of July 1, will be 83,411,000, plus you have to count just the annual appropriation debt. And then, this category is the strategic priority debt that's defined within the city's debt management policy, so that we count that separate. And the debt management policy allows you to go above the 75% as long as it's for those stated purposes. You also do have to count the annual payments to any developers here. So, we're anticipating 1,155,000 in fiscal '24. So, you know, before we issue any new debt, the outstanding geo-debt of the city is about 122,361,000. And I know Theresa just mentioned this. I had sent this to her at the beginning of the meeting, and then during the meeting we reduced this bond issue by about $5 million due to the cash on hand. So this would be the bond issue we would be anticipating selling. Like I said, that'll be closer to 10 million now with the adjustments. And so, the total debt of the city at the beginning of fiscal 2024 would be 137,566,000, which leaves an available legal capacity of 22,573,000. So about 85.9% against your legal capacity. So we, you know, we structure all the bonds, all the geo-bonds out on the horizon for the next five years to anticipate if we're going to have any concerns. And you can see there, I highlighted the maximum amount of 93.5%. And this is relatively conservative because we show this at the beginning of the year, and then we assume the debt gets issued on top of that, but there's always a June 1 payment, so that, so when we get into it, actually the timing, we take a closer look if we are getting up closer to that 100% number. So, let me stop there and see if there's any questions about about this, kind of what this exhibit is trying to accomplish.
Council, any questions for Matt?
Maybe this is really maybe a more question for Theresa. So Matt mentioned going from 15 million down to 10 million, using cash to reduce our debt borrowing. So where is the 5 million? Where's the source of that 5 million? Is it utility funds, or where?
It's actually remaining bond funds from other projects.
Okay. So those are, like, money that we borrowed already but just haven't spent? Okay.
One of the examples, and I think he'll pull up that worksheet as well. He always does a worksheet about our projects that we'll be borrowing for. But one of the examples was the sidewalk projects. We've borrowed $500,000 annually for several years and have a very healthy balance in there. And this next year will be our really first aggressive year with it, and we think if we just take a pause for one year and not issue that half a million, then we'll be, then we can start back up with our million, our half a million. And as Matt said to the committee last week, if there's any time for us to not borrow, it would be now, while the interest rates have been so volatile and rising, and what they feel will happen over the next 12 months. So he wanted me to look really hard, excuse me, he wanted me to look really hard at projects that were finalized, and where some money was sitting, and we kind of talked through that when we were in the committee on Friday.
So on the sidewalks specifically, we're not delaying the implementation?
Nope.
Okay, so that's clear. In essence, you're just using bond proceeds that you already had to pay for it instead of bonding for another five.
Yep.
Great, good to know, thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? I'm hearing none, Matt.
Okay. So then, the next exhibit that we always prepare is what I can call the projection of debt service levy. And on this exhibit, this is now taxable valuations. So when we look at these, now that the rollbacks have been applied to the assessed valuations, and so this is what you actually are able to collect your debt service levy based on. So, where before the value of the city was 3.2 billion, now the taxable value is just shy of 2 billion, so 1 billion 984. And so, you know, we've been trying really hard to, ever since we instituted the local option sales tax abatement, to really try to keep the levy at $2.34. So you can see, we've structured the new bonds accordingly. So, I would anticipate that you could keep the levy at $2.34, so no change in the levy based on the CIP as it's been presented. And then, and then that should generate And then you also bring in other sources. So you bring, we anticipate that you'll bring in 6.2 million from TIF to abate geo-debt, 2.69 million from lost, about 36,000 from water, 91,000 from sewer, and 374,000 from stormwater. So total resources of about 14 million. And then to pay debt service with the new bonds and the fiscal fees of about 14 million as well. So you can see, we've got all of the future, and on this sheet, this is just the pieces that are paid for by the debt service. Excuse me. These are just the pieces paid for by the debt service levy. So that's why this portion is different than the 15 million on the prior page. So these are just the funds that are paid for by the debt service levy. And so, you can see that we've got all these future years built in, including the East of Merle Hay projects, which are about 16, 16.6 million. And, you know, the tax rate, the projection on the tax rate does go up, all the way up to the 3.22. And so, you know, we talked about this quite a bit in the Finance Committee on Thursday. You know, one of the reasons I have this, like, these little yeses up here, is because on my model, I can turn them on and off, so that if we take out really everything but this year, it shows that the debt service levy will continue to go down. And then, once this is locked in, next year when we get the CIP, we'll structure it, and we'll really, and you can see, this bond issue is about a 12-year structure. So we try to shorten it as much as we can and still stay within the constraints of the tax rate, because obviously, maybe it's not obvious, but the shorter the bond issue, the lower the interest cost. So we try to save, helps the city save money where they can, but it also puts more pressure on the tax rate if you're going to try to fit other stuff in. So, we've got the other bond issues in here at 20 years. And this is the first year that we've included the East of Merle Hay, which is a pretty big project. It's the biggest, I mean, there's a lot of phases to it, but it's the biggest, the one biggest project that's in the CIP as far as trying to fund through the debt service levy. So, you know, as that continues to develop and the plan of finance comes together for that, you know, we'll continue to kind of watch the spacing of that and watch what we need to do in terms of the tax rate. But, as of right now, and I told the Finance Committee this on Friday, nothing in the CIP gives me cause for real concern this year, or even next year for that matter. But once you get two to three years down the road, there is going to be some pressure on the 2.34. And so, things that will help with that are, we've got some pretty conservative interest rates in here. We've got current market plus 150 basis points for the issue in May, and then we've got an additional 200 basis points in there for the future years out. In the current thought is that interest rates are going to peak, maybe late spring, and then stay there for maybe a year, and then to start, as the economy cools off, they're going to have to start to bring that interest rates back down to stimulate the economy. So, you know, we'll continue to watch those things. We also have, you know, some modest growth here with a little bit of a, you know, noise from the residential rollback and kind of how we anticipate that changing. So, to the extent that the valuations come in higher, that will also relieve pressure on the tax rate. And then, obviously, the lost abatements. We've got them plugged in there at 3.1 million out in the future years, but that will, you know, we won't use it if we don't need it, but then as we need it to bite on the tax rate, then we'll apply that. So, let me stop there, see if I missed anything, Theresa, or if there's any questions the council may have.
Theresa, did you have anything additionally?
Well, do you have any questions for Matt? And then I'd like to, if you have any questions for Matt, go ahead and ask them, but then if not, I'd like to go back and talk about the projects and see if we're all in agreement as I move forward, I guess.
Does the council have any questions for Matt? I see none. Theresa, do you want to talk about the projects?
Yes, please. In Board Doc Cindy, I believe I had also, I hope, I had, I'm trying to get logged in here. Did I have my report in there as well?
Theresa, did you?
The CEP plan by source, Cindy.
Is it in Board Ducks?
In Board Ducks. This is the CIP. As I have it ready to present to you to set a public hearing, what was discussed at our committee meeting was just identifying those projects that I can pay for with additional bond money, so that it doesn't show up as loans that we will be setting ourselves. But I wanted to make sure that for the 23, 24 specifically, we're all still in agreement that these are the projects that you want done. Is Matt still on, or did he hang up? Matt, do you by chance have your worksheet with the projects listed that we're borrowing for?
Yeah, you want me to share it?
Please. Okay. So, as we talked in our committee meeting last week.
Is there any way that you can make the focus a little bit closer, Cindy?
It's Matt, actually.
Oh, okay. Matt, thank you. Even a little bit more, but that's about probably good, so, all right, thanks.
We have funds available. I guess I want to make sure the council is still in agreement that they want to do all of these park improvement projects. The Waterford Trail, 78th Avenue Trail, we have remaining funds in the Merle Hay Trail Fund. That project is done. I'll be able to use cash from that project to pay for that fund, so we won't have to borrow for that. The Water Trail Connection, do we want to continue moving forward with building another Water Trail Connection? The Lou Clarkson Master Plan and additions. Do we park improvements? The Dog Park, Magnite Park improvements. Total park improvements that we'll be borrowing for are about 2.4 million dollars. I just want to make sure that the council's in agreement that you want to do all of those projects next year, and that you want to borrow that money for those projects. Then, under the miscellaneous projects, we have cash, we won't need to borrow for we have cash, we won't need to borrow for the sidewalks, but we will leave the project in there. We have Beaver Drive overlay cash remaining. Matt has to finish up just a few things, and then we'll be able to close out that project. We think we'll have enough cash, I believe, to pay for that project. The 54th Avenue Road Diet, I believe we think we'll have some cash available for that. There is no cash for the ambulance, but we were able to lower our costs for some of these projects pretty good significantly there. And then in TIF, we have some TIF remaining funds of pretty good substantial amount of TIF funds left in TIF 1, $500,000 that will help us pay for any one of those projects that will be occurring in TIF 1, Northwest 62nd Avenue Reconstruction, the Town Center Promenade, or potentially part of the roads, the Kaikulonch, or the grading for the, and we changed it in the CIP, Tom, I just forgot to tell Matt what we changed the name of that to. 5505 Merle Hay Road Redevelopment Grading is what we called that now. So, we have half a million dollars of TIF money in TIF 1, so we'll be able to borrow less from TIF 1. And then we have about 3.6 million in TIF 5 remaining from the Northwest 54th Avenue Project. We were the lead for that project with Urbandale, and we had to borrow the cash prior to us getting paid back. So, timing-wise, that's what happened there. But we also knew we had additional projects coming up in TIF 5. So, like the big one, the 100th Street Reconstruction, so we'll be able to borrow less for the 100th Street Construction than is in the CIP. We'll be able to borrow less by about 3.6 million. So we're able to lower our borrowing quite a bit next year for those issues. So, that's the major discussion that we had in our committee meeting. And then, the committee revisited and concur to move forward with things like Crown Point, Dog Park, Stormwater Projects, things like that. But, the direction that I received from the committee was to bring this back for full discussion with the council, not have anything on the agenda tonight for you to take action in case you did decide to move anything or reconsider anything. And then, at the next council meeting, the first meeting in January, I will have on the agenda to set the public hearing based on your direction to me tonight, and then the public hearing will be the second council meeting in January. Do you have any questions about any of these projects?
So Theresa, all of the projects that are on this list, we've identified others, to the extent we can, we've identified the other sources of funding that might be available so that we don't have to bond for some of these projects.
Sure. Yes, as far as I know, the department directors have done that, correct? You're all looking down. I need to look up and nod, yeah? Yes, yeah, I mean.
So, I guess I didn't see John in the back of the room there, but he is there. I'm thinking that on that last Water Trail Connection, there might be some sharing of costs on that.
There are definitely potentials for grants, but they're not guaranteed at this point. So, it's hard to account for those in this type of a budget without having a knowledge of what is they're capable. I certainly think that's capable 50 to 100,000, or maybe even a little bit more, but I would not want the budget for it.
That number could come down.
Yes.
We'll be, Matt and I plan to be borrowing this and closing on it prior to June, or prior to July 1. So, if there are grants available, and they can get on them right now and start applying for grants, and we get some word by February, March, that's going to help us lower what we ask for at that time.
I guess I'd like to ask Theresa, what kind of, when you say, "Are we fully committed, et cetera?" I do see some things that perhaps, I mean, perhaps they're not a have-to-have, but they could be delayed a little bit. Is there a target that you want to get to in reducing the amount that we're borrowing in this group of items? I mean, are you asking, do we need to put more cushion in here? What if something else came up that we had to use those funds for? I figure you've already planned for all those things.
Yeah, we talked about.
So I'm trying to get an idea from you of the urgency, or what we're looking for in terms of cuts here.
I want to be careful how I say this, councilperson, Martin. We're going to have a really, really tough budget session coming up here in the next month and a half. We're going to have tough requests from departments, we're going to have tough amount of money. We didn't get enough money to pay for everything everybody wants, of course. Tough discussion coming forward on lost revenue and what we want to spend again or not spend again. We spent almost a million dollars of lost money last year just to bring the tax rate down, enough to have shaved 60 cents off the tax levy, in addition to the almost million dollars you spent in reserve, not you, but the city spent in reserve to keep the tax rate down. Those things make me so very nervous. And so, all of the things that we do as projects that work, that build towards that levy, affect all our other levies of operating and benefits and all of that type of thing. So, you know, I was told once by a councilperson that's not on council anymore, that it's not my money, and I needed to relax a little bit. But, part of me thinks some of these aren't, because I would consider emergencies, and that they don't need to be done right now, and that we do need to wait till we see how we come up fiscally. Makes me nervous, what I read in the paper again this weekend. Iowa taxpayers are asking for two-years property tax freeze, property tax rate freeze. That happens to us, we're in big trouble, because we already had our rate lower than we should have. So, things, all of those things make me very nervous. Having said all of that, we haven't borrowed the money yet. We can approve a plan. We won't borrow that money till next April. May 15, thank you. It's like the Lord speaking from above or something. So, we won't have issued, or we won't have borrowed that money, or committed to it, and we'll know what the legislature has done, we will be through the budget, and, you know, I won't be quite as nervous. I think most of the department directors are very careful and cognizant of what they're trying to do, and putting in these projects, and the people want them. Our town wants them. The city administrator asked me to, he's going to do some calculating, or I'm going to do some calculating, I'm not sure. We always use the $100,000 house in Johnston. He asked if I could get the average cost of a residential home in Johnston, and, you know, it's 300 and some thousand, isn't it? And here I've been figuring it on 100,000. You know, maybe I'm not giving you guys the right picture. You know, so there's just so many things happening right now, and I get clutchy and I get nervous. So, I don't have a figure to tell you, oh, I think we shouldn't do that. I just want to make sure that in six months, you don't say to me, "I didn't know that was going to happen. I didn't know we were going to build a dog park for two and a half, two, a quarter of a million dollars." I didn't, you know what I mean? So that's why I'm just
I appreciate, I appreciate the
beating the drum, so to speak.
And I appreciate you being so invested, like it is your money, it's our money, it's the taxpayers' money. I totally appreciate that point of view, and I have taken to heart your messages. So, I like your idea that we don't have to borrow the money until we have had our next budget meeting and had a clearer picture about what the city's, let's call it, income will be. But I will tell you that I, depending on what we find out, I do believe that there is some places that we could tighten our belt in the list of things you just showed us, that I would that I would be willing to look at, based on what we find out in the bigger picture. If that's what you need to hear, that's what I have to say. I didn't think you wanted us to go picking at it right now.
No, not necessarily, but just, you know, if we have to revisit that in May, we'll revisit.
Absolutely, absolutely. I would be on board if we, if after we've found more information about the overall big picture, and we need to make some adjustments, and the wants, and the have to haves, happy to do it.
And Councilwoman Martin, I appreciate your comments, because I agree with you completely. We don't have to make these decisions tonight. It's good that we have this information, and that Teresa is challenging us to think about this. But we do need to put it in the broader perspective of the overall budget, and consider it that way. Teresa, I just make sure that I understand what has been presented this evening. Matt showed us a couple of documents that showed that we can do all of these projects, and we can do it keeping the.
234.
I'm sorry?
234.
Keep keeping the bond levy at 234. To the extent that we have identified other sources of revenue to pay for part or all of these projects, that pushes that down a little bit. So that does give us a little more cushion on the other side of the tax levy. So, you know, what I'm hearing is, we can do these things, and we can do it without, increasing the tax levy. But if we're feeling more pressure on the other side of the tax levy, we might want to come back and consider whether or not we want to delay these projects. So it's, you know, the sky isn't falling, we just need to make sure that, you know, those clouds just produce rain or snow, and not, you know, boulders on us or something.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Oh, we're definitely a city that's growing and has wonderful opportunities and prospects. I certainly don't want it to make it sound.
Yeah.
Doom and gloom, I just don't, I just want to make sure we're all looking at the full picture.
And, you know, one of the points that I made at the Finance Committee meeting is that, these are the things that our public sees. This is what they see their tax dollars going for. So if we cut some major projects out, you know, then we're going to have, then we're going to get questions. So, but, but again, to Councilwoman Martin's point, we need to consider this in the larger budget as we continue to work through this process. Other comments?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Does that take care of item 3A then? Okay. 3B, Communications Department Propose Budget.
Hey, Mayor and Council, so I missed the last week's work session, but when we talked about the budget, but I'm going to go over my communications budget. Up there on the screen, you'll see the communications budget, and the only thing different is in the spring of 2024 is when we will be doing the Business and Community Survey again. We had done it this spring, and we usually typically do it every two years. And then, some of the other changes that you'll see in there, I just increased some of the, by 6% based on some of the invoices I've been seeing this year. Last year I did about 3%, and some of the invoices are coming in more due to inflation, so I just increased that. Those are the only major changes within the communications budget. Does anyone have any questions about anything? I'll go over my decision package then.
Any questions, Council? I see none.
Great. So I just have one decision package, and this decision package is for City Bot. It's kind of a two-way chat text communication service, a text, and then it also offers an online service. Within the document, I was, let me see what page it was beyond. So they have three different breakouts, where if I can find it. For, it's on that first page right there, I guess, I thought I included any in here, but the web chat is 6,500, the SMS chat, which allows you to text back and forth to the residence is 3,450. The most expensive fee within that first year is the implementation to get everything set up. If you look on page four, it tells you, some of the cities around the United States have this service, and it's essentially a two-way communication. If for some reason City Hall is closed, you know, they don't want to call City Hall, they can chat with this person online and get the information. If for some reason they're not getting the information they want, then an email can go out to that specific department director. And when I was talking with the city of Mont Belvieu, Texas, about this service, their city is only about 8,000 people, and they have eliminated their customer service calls by 80% because people are going through this chat and asking, you know, is trash collection day delayed during the Christmas holiday? When is City Hall closed? You know, specific thing, when does, when does hat pipes on the green happen? So it'll provide links, that system is kind of automated, and it'll provide links, we work with, we would work with, City Bot to get everything set up in the system, and to ensure that all the questions, you know, it'll go through our website, obviously, but then we'll also analyze that to see if there's additional things that need to be added to it.
I have a question.
Yes.
So this is basically a way to more quickly answer kind of basic questions that are already available if you dig into newsletters, monthly newsletters, on information online, but, so it's 100% just making a service speedier or more clear. Do you have any idea what the trend is for staff answering the phone and answering questions like this is, like how much time it is? Is it going up, going down? I always, I used to be in a very service-oriented job, and I'm not anymore. So I don't have the idea that people are, older people are being able to find the things they need, or do they just pick up the phone still and call? Because I'm not sure my daughter would ever call here about any question ever. So that's, that's my, kind of my question to you is, how much time are we, overall, is, how much time are we saving? How needful we are for this service, in terms of who we're actually helping? Is it elderly? Is it, is it everybody? Is it parents?
I would say, I mean, Teresa, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think a majority of the elderly prefer to talk to someone when they call in, but when I was looking at the analytics of our website, it's like, two months ago, it used to be about 50% are using things from their mobile device. It's now up to 60% as of last week. So I think that younger generation, if we want to reach, they don't want to call and talk to someone, they want to just be able to chat with someone or ask us, you know, a question. So I think it probably would be targeting that younger audience. You know, I think it would help eliminate those quick calls. We get a ton of messages come through on social media, you know, on the weekends, on holidays. We're responding to those constantly, because you can't let 24 hours go by today in social media without responding to those questions when people private message us. So I think it would help eliminate that, and just that direct response to residents when they want to get that quick little answer, and can't find it either on the website, or don't receive our newsletters, or whatever it may be.
Does the chat box work the other way too? If we, would we be using this for sending informations back out, or is this only, only activated when people are contacting?
It's only activated when they contact. Now, they did have the service to where we could send messages out, but we already use that through Civic Ready, our Civic Ready system when we send out alerts, so I didn't put that as a budget in the line item in there. They do have that option, but we're already paying for a service already, so.
Thank you.
So, Janet, help me understand, if a question comes in at 10 o'clock on Saturday night, who responds to it?
Within the system.
Yeah.
The system will respond to it.
So the system will recognize what the question is?
Yes. If they, if they say trash collection delays, and then the system may respond back, depending on how we tell it to respond back. Are you concerned, or do you have a question about trash collection delays during the upcoming holidays? If they respond, yes, and then they could send them a link, or say trash collection delays will not be occurring this holiday season. Simple things like that, so.
So do we, so do we monitor the kind of questions that come in, so that we can build in what those responses might be?
Yes, and that's the great thing about it, is it provides us analytics based on the real-time things that people, questions people are asking. Do we need to push that information out on social media, or do we need to put that information in our newsletters? So I think one of the concerns had come up during our strategic planning session, is how do we measure those things people are asking on the website? This system does that for us in real time, so that's the great thing. We can put those right there on our homepage of our website, if people are asking specific questions, you know, that information, so it's right there in that real time. Sorry, I brought my water.
Any other questions for Janet?
Quickly.
Yes, Brian?
Thank you. You mentioned our social media interaction. Does this port into our social media through the website, or through SMS?
It will not. We would have to provide the information in there. You know, we could, right now we have a standard message that goes out saying, you know, these are our department directors. We could also include chat with our Johnston chat, or whatever we would decide to call it, to ask those specific questions. So then it would kind of redirect them to that chat.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was asking, the website, we have a small chat box at the bottom, something like that.
Yeah, that's just for accessibility. It's not a chat, it's not a chat, but it would be similar to that, where it'd be a button on the bottom, they'd click it, and that virtual assistant would come up, so.
Likewise, okay.
Yep.
That's good, that's all right.
Any other questions for Janet? Janet, is that it?
That is it.
Okay, good. I think that completes every item that we have on the agenda. Mike, do we have anything under City Administrator Communications?
I would.
Teresa's approaching.
Teresa has something.
But I would just point out, under City Manager, City Administrator Reports, I did include the commission and board appointments for next year, so they are up there. Please review it, if there's any issues or questions, please let me know. But that is, I believe, up to date and timely. I would note, regarding the school board liaison, right now it's listed just as Jim Evans, but both Councilmember Evans and Councilmember Ready would like to co-do that at this point, I guess, co-be liaison, so I'll update that and get that information there. But otherwise, I don't have anything else to report this evening.
I just want to thank everyone. I know that there was some interest in making some changes this year, and I appreciate everybody working together and seeing if some of those interests could be accommodated. So, thanks, thanks to everyone for doing that. And thank you, Mike, for working through that process.
No, I mean, the council members made it very, very easy, so thank you.
Great, great. Teresa, did you have something?
One of the, one of the departments, or one of the things I was going to talk about, oh, our last council meeting, our last budget session, that I didn't have completed, and Cindy, I needed to be council distributed, C E B, the Capital Improvement Program, Capital Improvement Plan, which is all the equipment for the departments. They all changed, and the plan now is also in Planet, which was the same software we used for the Capital Improvement Plan. And, excuse me, here's a quick look at what it looks like, but a couple of reports that are in this for you now is the equipment by department, and we have the current year we're in, and then what they need for next year, and then four more years after that as well. And then, also in here, on their detailed sheets now, is an image of the vehicle or the piece of equipment they're replacing, along with their justification, and a description of the vehicle, and the cost of the vehicle. Cindy, if you go back up to the Excel spreadsheets, which were like page four, maybe. And then also in here are the reconciliations for the Equipment Replacement Fund. And if you'll recall, we transfer money from general road use, water operation, and sewer operation into special equipment reserve funds for the equipment transfers. And then there's a certain balance, and some years they spend more than they've had transferred in, some years they spend less, and we've tried to keep this running balance. So if you just scroll down a little bit, so as you'll see, like, scroll a little bit more, thank you. Keep going, so I have a balance at the bottom. Okay, so in the general, which includes general and road use tax, we have a balance of about 1.6, I think. Next year, road use tax is buying quite a bit of equipment, and we're spending about 351,000 more than we're transferring in, and getting that balance back down to about a half a million, which is where we probably would really like it to be. And then there's a sheet for water and sewer. Anyway, the document is, you know, 100 and some odd pages long, sorry about that, but it has projects by funding source, projects by department, it has the reconciliations in the front of it, and I believe, we tried hard when we did the separate meetings with all the departments and the finance committees, for them to kind of talk with you about the equipment they were purchasing in their department that, this coming year, and I think most of them have done a really good job. We asked one department to go back and shave some off, so that they don't have these peak years, that they're really trying to keep about the same amount that they're buying, and most of them have done that for me. This is just a document that I'm going to put in the Board Docs library, and also give to you. It'll be part of the budget as well. And then if you have any questions, you want to look through it.
And when will we be reviewing this, then?
Whenever you, whenever you'd like, or however you, I don't know how you want to do it, if you want to take the time to go through the year that's coming up, or if you want to go through it. You know, we went each department the other night, we didn't really talk about their equipment that they're replacing, but in '23, '24, there's $1.2 million worth of equipment getting purchased, and it tells you in here which departments are doing what. And it includes, you know, I suppose the biggest department is Public Works at $400,000. Most of that, or all of that is road use tax. Water's 121, sewers 121,000. Parks and Rec is 148,000. Police Department has $239,000 worth of vehicles.
What I would, what I would suggest is, let's encourage the council members to take a quick look at this, and maybe at the meeting tomorrow night, we can talk about how we want to, how we want to review it, review it as a group.
And so when you get the, when you get the document, they're in department order, and hopefully year order, so the first few pages will be just the current year we're in and the next year. So, I'll email that out to you. Well? How am I going to do that? Oh, we'll put it on Board Docs, okay? So that's where it will be. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. We have a few more minutes, is there anything else that staff wants to report on? Well, let's do city council comments. Ben Evans?
Sure, Merry Christmas.
A second one. I don't have any comments, but happy holidays, everybody.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Have a great holiday. And I would say the same. I would also say that several of us went over to the Johnson High School on Friday, and took a, took advantage of a two-hour tour of the facilities over there, and the focus of the presentation was on kind of workforce programs and activities that they have going on in the school. And it was very, very well done, very interesting, and again, it's one of those situations that just make us very proud of our community and what our community has to offer, because you know, after, you know, hearing that presentation, and seeing the kids actually interact with you, and share with you their experiences. and seeing the kids actually interact with you and share with you their experiences in those programs that, you know, they're just getting an incredible education here in Johnston. So that was, that was really worthwhile. For those tour schools.
I'm going to jump in and speak. I spent yesterday morning at the Summit School, Summit Middle School as a judge for one of the Lego tournaments.
Oh, wow.
For students from grade four to eight and it was amazing. And I highly recommend anybody that has kids that are in that age or, I mean, they have a lot of age, different levels, but I think it, it looked like they were having a good time and learning a lot, so I think, I think if my kid, if I'd gotten him into that, I think he would have enjoyed it, but at that time it wasn't as well known, so, yeah.
I also want to thank everyone for, you know, all of your involvement in the activities that we've put on, the, the holiday activities that we've put on for the community this year. The last couple of weekends have just been full of all kinds of things going on and we've gotten some incredible feedback from, from all of that, so, so thank you so much for doing that. And I would also remind you that we're still kind of halfway through the mayor's hunt for food. You know, the donations are coming in strongly. We set a goal of 1,500 this year, which means $15,000 either donated in bags of food or monetary contributions. We're about halfway there, right Janet?
We are. We're about, I think, what'd they say, 649. I received an update from Hy-Vee today when the mayor was standing there from 8 to 10 AM during.
I just go into these stores and I just shake people down.
Coffee with the cop, breakfast with Santa. We got about, I think, 24 more miles. So there's a, the partnership is closed starting Thursday at 1:00 until the second. So if you could donate online, that is fabulous. Otherwise, bringing it in here to City Hall, we can make sure it get the information, you know, the food or monetary donations gets over to the Johnston Partnership. So we're close and I think we'll get there, so.
We got to keep, keep making the request, keep making the ask. Anything else for the go-to the order?
One thing I wanted to talk about real quick, if I could, is we do have a fairly significant winter storm coming in on, starting on Wednesday.
You didn't have to bring that up, did you?
I know, but just Wednesday evening, so we'll have staff out on the roads clearing the snow as well as potential for some severe blizzard weather with the wind.
It begins Wednesday evening?
Yeah, correct. We'll have, the snowfall will start Wednesday evening, continue through most of Thursday and taper off Thursday evening into Friday morning.
Okay. So Friday, Saturday should be okay?
You'll have blowing snow. Friday is going to be the heaviest winds, so that's going to impact the blowing snow. So just be mindful of that if you're out traveling or have family traveling to your house.
Well, thanks again to your crew, Matt, for all of the great work they do removing snow. We, we get high marks for snow removal and we, as we know, the, the lack of snow removal in some communities has been the fate of mayors, winning or losing their jobs. It happened in Chicago. It's not going to happen here. Thank you. Anything else? If not, we will adjourn the work session and we'll come back in just a few minutes for the regular council meeting. Thanks, everyone.